Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's public hearing on the FY 2018 advertised budget. I'm Tammy Darnatt-Kofax. I'm the lead district representative to the Fairfax County School Board, and this year, I am the chair of the Budget Committee with my vice-chair, Mr. Ilion Moon. On behalf of our school board members, I would like to thank you for taking your time to come out tonight and to talk to us about the advertised budget. At this time, if you've not already done so, please provide your written comments to one of the clerks seated in the box to my right, and please turn off or silence your cell phones. Tonight, we have, oh, let me see, a little over forty speakers, two of which are students who will be first to speak. And each speaker is allotted three minutes, and to be respectful to everyone, I ask that you stay within that time limit. The deputy clerk will start the timer when you begin to speak, and you'll be able to see it from the lectern on the clock that's right there. The buzzer will sound at the conclusion of your three minutes, and I will ask you to please finish up if you have not done so. Three names and their speaker numbers will be announced at a time, and when you hear your name and speaker number, please move closer to the front of the auditorium. I see you're all kind of close as it is, but once you hear your name, if you can move up to these front rows, if they're not occupied, I would appreciate that. And if a speaker is not there when their name is called, those names will be called again at a later time. If you have not registered to speak tonight but would like an opportunity to address us, please see one of the clerks to sign up for one of the five extra speaker slots, and your name will be called after registered speakers. And there will also be an opportunity for speakers to speak if there are no show slots at the remaining of the hearing. After all registered speakers have addressed our board, I will announce whether or not there are no show slots available. And for this, we ask that you state your name and your full name when you speak, and if you, once you have spoken, please see the clerks, as they may collect your personal information. So throughout the evening, you may notice that some board members may leave the table. Just know that your voice is still being heard. There are televisions in the back while board members may have come directly from work and maybe getting something to eat back there, so they will be listening to you. And with that, we can begin, and we'll begin with our first student speaker, and our first student speaker is Isabella Nicola. And then after that, we have a group, who is Tommy Majesny, Ryan, and Savannah Thomas. So, thank you, Isabella.
Hi, everyone. My name is Isabella Nicola, and I am in fifth grade at Island Creek Elementary School. I am here to tell you why we should keep the strings program in Fairfax County. My string teachers, Mr. Baldwin and Mrs. Hicks, have made my experience in the program wonderful. The programs teach children the wonders of music, knowledge of the notes, and how to read music correctly. It's not only a learning process, but it is also a fun and enjoying time. I would know because I'm in the strings program. I think that many people that are in the program have enjoyed the process of learning music and the notes. This is why we should mainly keep the strings program. Many people are in it for starters, and many people would very much dislike it if we got rid of it. One of those people is me. The strings program is wonderful. Why? Because it is a journey of the music and hearing sounds you never heard. During my time in strings, I have laughed, smiled, learned, and loved music like I never did before. I know that I am not the only person who would miss the strings program if it was gone. My teachers have made a prosthetic for me so I can actually play. I always thought to myself, man, I wish I could play strings. How can I, though? I was about to give up, but an amazing thing, my prosthetic, had come into my life and changed everything. Many people have a hand like me and have tried to work through the hard stuff. I personally think the program teaches people to not give up when things get rough. I strongly think we should keep it. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Our next group is Tommy, Ryan, and Savannah Thomas. If you call, want to come up to the podium, you could, if you all have something, just all crowd around that microphone, and you can move it down if you're not quite tall enough to reach it.
Guten Abend. Ich heiße Tommy Majesny, und ich bin in der vierten Klasse in Orange Hunt Elementary School. Good evening. My name is Tommy Majesny, and I'm in the fourth grade at Orange Hunt Elementary School. I moved to Virginia last summer from Germany. I went to a German school. There, my parents were really excited that I would have the opportunity to continue my German learning. When we found out that Orange Hunt had a German immersion program, I knew that it was the best school for me. Going to Orange Hunt really helped me to learn German and remember the German I had learned before. I would really miss it if I could not speak German anymore. My brother Ryan is in the second grade, and he went to German school, too. He isn't in the German immersion program yet. Ryan does get German class once a week, but it isn't enough to help him remember all of the German he learned in Germany. We try to speak at home when we can, but the difference is noticeable. I am afraid that Orange Hunt doesn't have the immersion classes anymore. I will start forgetting some German, too. I really hope that the classes are still around for the next year for both of us. When we lived in Germany, I noticed that most Americans didn't speak another language. Almost all of the German people, including kids at my school, spoke more than one language. We learned English in school almost every day, which was easy and fun for me. I can see why it is so valuable to learn more than one language, and I know that the German immersion program is my best chance to learn German as well as speaking it. Please vote to keep the immersion programs going for my future, my brother's future, and the future of all the kids in Fairfax County schools. Danke.
Ich heiße Ryan, und ich bin in die zweite Klasse in Orange Hunt Grünshule. Good evening. My name is Ryan, and I am in second grade at Orange Hunt Elementary School. I want to go to German immersion classes because I like learning new words in German. Right now, I know most of the words I am learning in LTC. I wish I had German more than once a week. It is important for me to keep learning German because I love speaking a second language. It is really cool, and most American kids don't do it. Please help German immersion program so I can go to it next year, hopefully. Danke.
Mein Name ist Hawana Thomas, und ich wusste, dass wir haben den German. Good night.
Do you want German? Tell them you like the German.
I like the German. It is really fun. I have German once a week.
Thank you so much for sharing your thoughts with us. We appreciate it. Our next speakers are Eric Bond, Ava Vogel, and Mary Lee Dispirito. Eric?
My name is Eric Bond, and I'm ten years old. I'm a fourth grader in the German immersion program at Orange Hunt Elementary School. I've been in the program since first grade. I am a dual citizen of America and Switzerland. My parents raised me to speak German as best as they could, but they aren't, since they aren't native German speakers, but it's okay, because I've learned to speak German correctly at school. I can have conversations with anyone who also speaks German. Also, Orange Hunt has been great because there are lots of German kids speaking that live in the area. I love living in a diverse community. The German language is an important part of who I am, so I worry that if I can't go to the German school, then I'll forget it. I also know that learning different languages, when you are young, helps to develop more parts of your brain. Because I'm bilingual, I will probably have more success in school than I otherwise would have, and when they're, when you're a grown-up, it's really hard to learn how to speak more languages. My parents tell me this a lot, because I correct their German all the time. You can grow up just knowing one language, but knowing more is better. Most people in America only know one language. It's kind of like being cut, we're being cut off from the rest of the world. If you make a friend, and they speak a different language from you and can't speak English, what are you going to talk about? I want to learn more languages because I want to be able to make friends from all around the world. Please don't cut for the language immersion program. Danke. Thank you for your time.
You're welcome. Thank you for coming.
Good evening. My name is Ava Vogel, and I am a fourth grader at Orange Hunt Elementary School. And tonight, I would like to tell you why the language immersion programs are important to me. My sister and I are in the German immersion program because we have many family members in Germany, and because of the program, we can communicate with them. Learning a new language can make you more successful in your career. I know this because my dad travels for work, and he knows a lot of languages, and it helps him communicate with his coworkers and helps them. It is also important for kids to learn when they are younger, because our brains are like sponges, and it's easier for us to learn. My teachers work hard to make learning math and science in German fun by doing games and songs and outdoor activities. I also think it's, it is fun to learn a new language. Recently, I have completed a project, and I was completing the German. I was very proud of it. I also don't want anybody after me to miss out on the opportunity I had of learning a new language, mainly my younger sister. Immersion is important, and we should keep it in Fairfax County public schools. Dankeschön und eine guten Abend. Thank you and good night.
We now have Mary Lee Dispirito, followed by Nicole Guinia, and then Kevin Landis.
Good evening. I'm Mary Lee Dispirito. I've lived in Fairfax County for forty years. My daughter attended school in the public schools from the time she was in kindergarten through high school. But tonight, I want to talk to you about something else that has been on my mind. I am a volunteer, and some of you know some of my volunteer work. The parent liaisons provide a very essential service for our community, for our students, and for the parents. When this position was created about twenty-five years ago, we didn't have quite as many people in Fairfax County. We weren't quite as diverse as we are today. So the parent liaisons are doing a different job these days, and it is a very difficult job. We have to support them, and I work closely with them on a number of things, first being the holiday basket program, and I assume you're all familiar with that, Thanksgiving and Christmas. I'm one of the people in the community who looks for donors or sponsors for families. A lot of those referrals for families come from parent liaisons. The program really depends on them, because when my donors have a problem, I can always count on the parent liaison to get the right answers for me. My husband coordinates the ACA, that's the Annandale Christian Community for Action Furniture Program, and we work closely with the parent liaison at Bailey's Elementary, Maria Demrist, and I'm sure a lot of you know her. Many times, when she calls or when she sends us a note, we know we can count on her to screen those requests well and have them vetted. And when it comes time to make the delivery, she makes sure those families are at home ready for our volunteers to make the delivery. The parent liaisons get into all kinds of things that are quite unusual, and I can remember earlier this year, Maria called me. A parent had been in a very severe accident. The mother was in a coma in the hospital, the father was in the hospital. This family was facing eviction while they're both in the hospital. Maria worked very diligently to put together a package, and it lasted, I believe it was two months. She put together a package to have people in the community support this family. They did not get evicted. The Budget Committee and the full board, I hope, will consider seriously what parent liaisons do, but also how they support the community.
We have Nicole Guinia, followed by Kevin Landis, and then Ursula Casabon. Nicole? No? All right, Kevin Landis.
My name is Kevin Landis, and I'm one of the owners of Fox's Music, a local music store that's been serving northern Virginia for over sixty years. And yes, I'm here tonight to urge you not to cut fourth-grade strings. While it goes without saying that students would suffer most if the first year of strings was cut, there would also be serious collateral damage to the large northern Virginia music business community. In this age of fierce internet competition and razor-thin profit margins, instrument rentals have become the dominant revenue stream for the many school music dealers in our region. It's one area in which consumers clearly want the service and support that only local brick-and-mortars can provide. I recently analyzed our rental numbers and came to the surprising conclusion that fourth-grade beginners account for almost seventy-five percent of our string rental business, a figure confirmed by other local retailers, and which I suspect may be an industry constant. A loss of this magnitude would be devastating to the many area music dealers who have invested heavily in their stock of rental instruments. Private teaching studios, repair shops, and local ensembles would also suffer. I realize the welfare of local business is not the responsibility of the school board, but budget cuts have repercussions in the community at large, and I believe it's important to be aware of these consequences. You might also consider that business losses on this scale would further erode the dwindling commercial tax base that helps support our schools. Eliminating fourth-grade strings would have a corrosive impact on the quality and enrollment of the entire strings program. It provides an indispensable window of learning, not only for building needed motor skills and technique, but also for capturing the interest of children at their most receptive age. There's no way the program can maintain its current high standards if this year is lost. It also sets a dangerous precedent. If you cut fourth-grade strings now, the next time, it'll be fifth-grade band, and eventually, the elimination of instrumental music from elementary altogether. By then, your once-nationally respected music program will be on the road to mediocrity and the drastic enrollment decline that's been documented when feeder programs are cut. No longer will band and strings be the shining jewel in the crown of Fairfax County that they are today. As an alumnus of the Woodson High School Band, I can vouch for the unique character-building experience school music provides. It teaches self-discipline and teamwork, transmits our cultural heritage, and provides a positive creative outlet that's much-needed in adolescence. But let's not forget what's most important: the preservation through education of one of mankind's most ageless, ubiquitous, and sublime endeavors. Music fulfills a universal and deep-seated need in the human psyche. Doesn't it deserve a similar place in our educational curriculum?
Ursula Casabon, followed by Liz Spoto, and then Courtney Brown.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Ursula Casabon. I'm the mom of Felix and Valentina, who is, Felix is six and Valentina is three. In September, my son Felix started the dual immersion Spanish program at Lake Gann Elementary in Breston, and his Latin mother couldn't be more thrilled. You see, I was born and raised in Caracas, Venezuela. Twelve years ago, I moved to Washington, DC to pursue my graduate studies. I married an Irish-born American citizen, and three years ago, we moved to Reston, Virginia for the prospect of our kids attending the best schools in the country with a one-of-a-kind option of Spanish immersion. Looking back in my life, by far, the single most important decision my parents made was enrolling me in an English immersion elementary program in Caracas, which allowed me to become fully bilingual at an early age. Growing up bilingual, I became bicultural. Bilingualism afforded me the possibility of easily taking part in the life of different cultures, become an intermediary between cultures, expand my social network, and has contributed enormously in incalculable ways to my professional success. Perhaps the most poignant memory I have of being aware of this bicultural aspect of being bilingual was how my parents reveled in utter amazement when they saw me laughing so hard while watching a stand-up comedy show playing on HBO on cable TV. While they understood some English, they were far from able to understand and comprehend the humor. Aside from its instrumental and economic value for my children, learning Spanish is a source of self-knowledge. It will help them unlock the untranslatable wisdom and character of their South American grandparents, aunts, and uncles. It will help them to revel the subtle truths of their family's history. It's a form of cultural capital. It will help them know their true self, who they are, and where they came from. In this time of extreme contrasts, it is very important that we embrace bilingual education, for it fosters a culture of empathy, tolerance, and inclusion. I make a call to our community to save our cherished and longstanding language immersion program. It would be so short-sighted to eliminate a world-class program like ours to resolve a short-term budget issue. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. My name is Liz Spoto, and I've been on Sleep's leadership team since 2008. I began working on healthy school start times when my oldest child was seven, and my youngest was three. Now, my daughter is a sophomore at Langley, and my son is a rising seventh grader at Cooper Middle School. It's been a really long time. Sleep didn't ask our members to speak tonight, but I'm here to represent the more than ten thousand individuals who have signed our petition. We'd like to thank the board, the FCPS transportation team, and the community for implementing later high school start times two years ago. After years of work, you all miraculously launched just in time for my daughter to start high school, and I'm really thankful. I've seen the science play out in her. As she aged through adolescence, it became physically harder and harder for her to fall asleep before 10:30, even with really great sleep hygiene. But with the extra fifty minutes in the morning, in God's grace, she hasn't missed a day of school due to sickness. Her grades are great. She has a robust life outside of school, and she's actually even a really enjoyable teenager. I've also listened closely to volumes of parents in the community who have expressed to me their relief, praise, and thanksgiving for the later high school start. The sky did not fall, sports did not collapse, but the sun shone for those who are enjoying happier, healthier children because their alarms are sounding nearly an hour later than they had previously. But our work isn't done. Middle schoolers and their families all over FCPS are hurting. I'm sure you recall the group of students who came to speak last fall about their trials with a 7:30 middle school start. Asking adolescents to board buses at 6:00 AM, when abundant research shows that teens should start after 8:30, really isn't acceptable. My son starts middle school next year. His first block bell will ring nearly two hours earlier than it has for the last seven years, at a time when his body clock is shifting later and later. Waking at 5:45 to catch a 6:20 bus will mean that he'll miss the most restorative sleep of the night, the time when research shows that his brain is repairing itself, cementing memories from the day's learning, clearing plaque that can lead to devastating illnesses like Alzheimer's disease, and much, much more. FCPS did really great work two years ago when they helped our high school families. Many of you will remember your commitment to continue this work to help our middle school kids. It's been two years, and it's time to begin to fulfill on that promise. I realize that the budget is a challenge. It always is, and it always will be, but that doesn't mean we give up. Perhaps we push back the time a little bit each year, or commit to changing a few schools at a time. I'm open to how we get there, but we need to start. We can't allow another generation of kids to suffer when we know the science. We can't allow another generation of kids to suffer when we know the science and we've seen the effects bear out in the families around us. Please, I urge you to include healthy middle school start times in your budget discussions this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speakers are Courtney Brown, Elizabeth Bedell, and Wemmy Peters.
Hi. Dr. Lockard, Chairwoman, Callfax, Vice Chair Strauss. It's good to see you all. I'm here today as Chesterbrook Elementary School's PTA President, as a parent, and as a Fairfax County employee. I substitute teach at our child's school. Needless to say, I spend a lot of time at our wonderful school. You see, long ago, I bought into the Fairfax County Public School System hook, line, and sinker. My husband graduated from Chesterbrook Elementary School, Longfellow Middle School, and McLean High School. Eleven years ago, we disagreed about where to buy a house. I was set on being in Arlington, and he won me over with one simple argument: the school system. And I knew it, too, because growing up in Virginia Beach in my tiny little private school, my college counselor would tell me, "You're going to have to compete with those Fairfax County Public School kids for college." And it was a real threat, right? To get into college alongside these excellent children. Fairfax County has enjoyed a long history of fame, though. My cousin, who just recently finished her service as a school board member in North Carolina, said Fairfax County is the gold standard. We certainly thought it was. We studied Fairfax County and their systems and modeled ourselves after it. Our school system's success is tied directly to our property values, low crime rates, and strong communities. When our school system does well, it isn't just the children of the district benefit. It makes our homes more desirable, more valuable, and historically, our school system has been our county's anchor. Real estate in Fairfax County has always been a good investment. But lately, we are losing our talent to neighboring counties that offer better salaries and building beautiful new schools, and we see it especially clearly on the edges of our district. I'm here today to echo the feeling that my entire PTA Board and of nearly seventeen parent volunteers and our six-hundred-and-fifty families are feeling we cannot fall behind. We know you guys have a difficult decisions to make. We want you to know that we appreciate you making these decisions on our behalf and that you're making these decisions in our best interest. We know you need us, and you need us with you, and we are willing to step up. We don't wish to mourn any loss of things in our programs. So how do we keep it all? How do we maintain what we have, these immersion programs, the sleep studies, like the wonderful programs we've already put in place? But what I'm asking is what our communities can do. I urge you all to consider all our learners. We are aware of how large and diverse our county is, and we are trying to help. Chesterbrook Elementary School has adopted a buddy school-- one month late-- and so far, we have spent the year making flashcards, helping them study, providing board games for their holiday shop, and donating warm clothing for kids who don't have suitable wear. You have a big county to answer to, but before you make any cuts to our incredible programs, please involve us, reach out to us, see how we can be of service, too. Thank you very much for your time.
Elizabeth Bedell, followed by Wemmy Peters, and then Andrea Cabrera.
Hi. My name is Elizabeth Bedell. This is my daughter Kate, and this is my son Ben. They're at Foxville Elementary School in the Japanese immersion program, and that's why we're here today. Kate's goal right now is for us to save money and try to go to the Tokyo Olympics in 2020, so keep it till sixth grade. I'm disappointed that this issue keeps coming up as one of the sensible programs to cut. I kind of looked into it with my principal, and we looked at some changing trends at our school that may affect whether or not this actually ends up being, you know, the projected cost savings that it's seen as. For example, this year in first grade, there are sixty-four kids in the Japanese immersion program and only thirty in the general ed. So it's pulling--it's the first year it's ever happened. It's pulling so much more from the boundary kids. So it's serving the community that it's in, and that's pretty exceptional, and he said that had never happened. Another thing we're doing at the principal discretion is the fruit basketting. You might have heard of this, where the grades, as they get older, if there is attrition into the AAP centers, and I'll talk about that, it's happening less, they mix the classes. So there's one English and social studies class, and that's all together, and then they do the language separate from that, so there's less of a staffing need if it's done that way. And we encourage it because it helps them meet the other kids at the school. So we're actually encouraging it at the lower grades to start mixing them together a lot more creatively. And then the third thing is, since Foxville has had advanced placement level--advanced math beginning in the third grade, we've seen a lot less kids go over to the AAP center. So we're keeping the numbers. The class sizes are staying as large as they were, and that's a great trend, too. So we're very excited about that. So it's a good fit for us. So like I said, I think the savings could be a little bit oversold. The other--you know, my other main concern is that this is such a major cut to a program that can't be redone. We can't replicate it again in the same way without starting all over from scratch. So I would urge cuts that can be undone in a year. This one cannot be. The other thing is, I just, you know, in this political climate, you know, the PR of, you know, Fairfax County eliminating all of its foreign language programs, I mean, that's just another sort of, you know, nail in the coffin of this whole environment. In her class alone, there are three Fort and Service Officers kids. I was a diplomat for ten years. I mean, this is serving a community that really wants children to have native, you know, bilingual language skills. We tried to learn languages as adults, especially Asian languages, and it's very difficult. So the fact that they would be proficient and native would be fantastic. So with that, I say thank you, and thank you for your service on this board. I appreciate it very much. Night.
Thank you. Wemmy Peters, followed by Andrea Cabrera and Ted Gagnon. Wemmy? Peters? All right. Andrea Cabrera.
My name is Andrea, and I'm Isabella's mom. My daughter was born missing her left hand. When she was in fourth grade, just like most of her peers, she wanted to join the strings program at Island Creek Elementary School. My immediate reaction was, what instrument can she play with just one hand? She wanted the cello at first. However, since she was a bus rider, she could not bring such a large instrument on the bus. Then we considered the violin. When we approached her strings teachers, without hesitation, they said, "Yes. We can work with Isabella and make the necessary adaptations to make it possible for her to play the violin." Her teachers have told her this is a work in progress. They would try everything from A to Z to make it possible for Isabella to play just like her peers. They are currently on the G model and are still working on ways to improve her adaptation. The music program at Fairfax County is just as important as any other aspect of the Fairfax County curriculum. A child is much more than just math, science, and language arts. A child is a human being with different likes and dislikes and different ways of expressing their individuality. Music is another way for a child to excel. In many ways, music is an escape for a child from what has now become nothing more than an electronics and social media society. I don't know about you, but I would much rather have my child practicing her violin notes than doing music lists on her phone. The fourth-grade strings program built the foundation for elementary-school-age children to love music. If we remove this program at the fourth-grade level, we may have missed that crucial window to build the interest, commitment, and love for a healthy hobby and admiration for the arts. Let's not let money dictate where our children should invest their time. Had it not been for the dedication and commitment of the string teachers at Island Creek, my daughter would not have been able to have her first concert playing her violin in front of many people and then come to me at the end and say, "I did it, Mama. You were right. I can do anything if I don't give up." Please, don't give up on our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Ted Gagnon, followed by Chris Liveri. Mr. Gagnon? Chris?
Good evening. My name is Chris Liveri, and I'm a mom of two kids. I have a daughter and a son. They're both at the Orange Hunt Elementary. We do speak already at home a different language. I do also speak German. So basically, I know three languages, but I know how important it is, not just here, but all over the world, to know these languages. The immersion program is just a small fraction of the total Fairfax County Public Schools budget, so we have to think about that. It's 1.9%, but still, fully implemented immersion programs are cost-neutral according to the most studies and the Fairfax County Public School principles. In fact, the transportation costs will increase because immersion students will now be riding buses. So that bike-pilot kids do qualify for the AAP, or if they go to my regular district, they will be actually riding the buses. So this will higher the cost. My biggest fear is that immersion programs are eliminated, and they will never come back. The cost-reimprovised programs in the future will be struggling. The current talent pool accumulated at Fairfax County Public Schools would be lost, and the Fairfax County Public Schools will fall further behind our neighboring countries, who are building stronger immersion programs every year. I know exactly Arlington. I do not want to move there. I want to be here because of the program, because of the immersion. It's really important. We need to do the right thing now for the future. To remain a top-notch school system in a competitive market, we need to retain the immersion language program and give our children an opportunity to reach their full potential. We cannot eliminate the immersion program. We need to save it. We need to expand it. We need to go further with that. There are so many parents who would like to have their kids there. It's hard to get there, but it's really, really great program. It's probably the best thing at the Fairfax County Public Schools. Thank you. And my kids are not here because they are at home. They are sleeping. They need their sleep.
Thank you. Kathleen Mallard, followed by Mike Nye and Justin Ward.
Hi. Good evening. I'm Kathleen Mallard, and I'm with the Fairfax County Taxpayers Alliance, although my remarks were not necessarily part of their agenda. Good evening, Interim Superintendent Stephen Lockard and Board. I spent some time today reviewing the proposed 2018 budget and the many related charts and facts and figures, and I'm seeing double right now. The magnitude of your job must be, at times, overwhelming. I want to thank you all for your efforts. I'd like to share some thoughts with you about the revenue side. I don't need to tell you that you have an important job and a great responsibility to the taxpayers, because the revenues for Fairfax County Public School System are from county, state, and federal sources, which translates into revenues from taxpayers, primarily local, but also state and nationwide. Fairfax County children, almost a hundred and ninety thousand of them, receive an excellent education for approximately fifteen thousand dollars per pupil a year, which, for the most part, comes at no real personal cost except the taxes that parents pay. In my line of work, I personally know many teachers, principals, and administrators, not only from Fairfax but all around the region. I know how fortunate our children are to live in this part of the world. But recently, I was talking to some teachers who were very disappointed with what former Superintendent Garza did. They said she's been hired to be president and CEO of Batel for Kids, a nonprofit educational organization based in Columbus, Ohio. In recently published records, she will be earning approximately three hundred and seventy thousand dollars a year. Batel for Kids currently works with FCPS to provide development and school improvement, at least I think they do. Recently, FCPS signed a five-year service contract with this nonprofit agency for two hundred and eighty thousand dollars, and I don't know if that's per year or for the five years. At any rate, this is a real conflict of interest, I would say, and this is something that could be cut. Why cut the immersion programs and the strings programs? Why don't we cut out this Batel for Kids contract? Because these teachers who I met, happened to meet, said they have these people coming into their classrooms, observing them, then going out and writing up reports, and it was not at all helpful to them. Another area where I'm concerned is the drug, the Safe and Drug-Free Youth Program. I live near McLean High School, and a neighbor found two bags of marijuana laced with something. The police came and said that this area has seen a large increase in drug-related incidents. I just found one of those little bags of papers that you roll up cigarettes. So I think we really need to be looking at those programs. Cut Batel for Kids. Don't cut out these very important programs for our children, which keep them away from drugs. You say families play a fundamental role in their children's education. Let's see some more action that supports this belief, and thank you very much.
Mike Nye, followed by Justin Ward, and then Angela Starling.
As a CPA with twenty years of experience in accounting and finance, I will talk about 2018 proposed budget. We all know the county school board has a mission to provide high-quality education to our students, and our budget has to be a student-centered budget. By looking at this chart, in the past sixteen years, from 2000 to 2016, our budget increased 100%. Doubled. Our student enrollment for the same period only increased 22%, meaning what? Meaning the money spent is five times more than our student enrollment. Where does the money go? I give you three examples how the budget, current budget, is mismanaged and our taxpayers' money is ill-spent. Example number one. By looking at this chart, my son worked, studied in the trailer classroom. Students and teachers exposed to the icy and slippery stairs and even concussion risk, while you, school board members, work in the sexy, glassy, and shiny school board building. That is money ill-spent. That is not a student-centered budget. Example number two. The superintendent earned three hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year plus fringe benefits, while our teachers have to deal with a large-sized classroom with no pay increase for years, have to live in a Chevy apartment miles and miles away from the school. That is not a student-centered budget. Example number three. An influx of undocumented families coming to our county and stress our school system. Have you all noticed an increased number of beggars with kids wandering around Fairfax County shopping centers? So how do you do deal with that? Assuming one family has three kids sent into our county system, every child, we pay fourteen thousand dollars for education, and plus twelve years of public education, that's five hundred thousand dollars per family. We, taxpayers, have to pick up the tab. That doesn't even include the free health insurance, the free lunch, and the free ESOL program. So with these three reasons, I strongly urge you to consider all this when you approve or disapprove the school budget. We, taxpayers, you work with for us, taxpayers, we want nothing simply like responsible, reasonable, and sustainable school budget. Thank you so much.
We have Justin Ward, followed by Angela Starling, and then either Curtis or Heather Marshall.
My name is Justin Ward, and I'm a parent of a student in an immersion program at Fairfax County. My message is clear: don't cut the immersion program. Instead, make smart budget decisions that will benefit our students and our county as a whole. In terms of immersion, you are likely aware of the research showing the benefits of the immersion programs. These include proficiency in a second language, higher levels of reading achievement in English, better pattern recognition and problem-solving, more successful schooling experiences in general. In addition, two-way immersion programs, such as the Spanish immersion program at Lake Anne Elementary, help native Spanish speakers as well, ultimately resulting in higher GPAs and increased enrollment in post-secondary education for the student group, which, in the case of the Hispanic population, is the fastest-growing in Fairfax County and is nationwide the group with the highest rate of school failure. So if you're aware of these facts, and the immersion program is still set to be cut, then this must purely be a financial-- then this must purely be a financial issue. So let's talk finances. By state law, the county must have a balanced budget, so debt is not an option. So we must either be raising revenue or cutting expenses. To raise revenue, you can either increase fees for school programs or eliminate waivers for fees, which the Budget Task Force has thankfully suggested, and/or capitalize on state and federal grants and waivers that allow for more expenditures to be eligible for reimbursement, including increasing enrollment of students eligible for Medicaid. This is something the Budget Task Force has not considered and something I urge the board to do. To cut expenses, the Budget Task Force has considered eliminating programs, increasing class sizes, and reducing pay and pensions. This, in my opinion, is not the direction we should go. If the board wants to move in this direction, I urge you to consider reducing administrative spending by centralizing certain responsibilities and using FCPS's economy of scale to increase purchasing power and operate more efficiently. Moreover, I urge you to increase your outrage. These discussions happen every year, and they don't need to. This is a systemic issue, and FCPS needs to ensure the county knows that families move to Fairfax County because of the schools. When more families move here, more businesses move here, and the tax base of the whole state increases. I moved my family here because of the schools, and if you begin making drastic cuts instead of increasing fees, the quality of the schools will decrease. And if that happens, people like me will stop seeing Fairfax County as a place for families to be, and will begin seeing it as a place for families to have been in the 1990s and the early 2000s, when the property taxes were 6.4% higher than they are today and when Fairfax County Public Schools were at the peak of their performance nationwide. I urge you to make smart budget decisions that increase your ability to provide programs and services to children and not eliminate those programs. Make use of the federal grants and waivers, and in particular, don't cut the immersion program. It's helpful for students, families, and for our county.
Thank you. Angela Starling, followed by Curtis or Heather Marshall, and then Sonia Lemus.
Good evening. Thank you. I'm here to address mental health services and our schools. In September 2011, we enrolled my daughter in a Fairfax County high school, a bright and shiny freshman. She had big plans. She wanted to join the ROTC program. She wanted to make new friends and go to prom. After high school, her plan was to join the military, preferably the Marines. She wanted to study forensics, and by age 30, her plan was to be working at the FBI. Well, two months into ninth grade, all of this changed with a fainting spell in guitar class. After many, many such episodes, she was finally diagnosed with POTS. It was the beginning of a nightmare. Ambulances, nurses, office, in-school for a couple of days, out of school for a couple of weeks, homebound papers, and school meetings. At each school meeting, the counselors and teachers and the IEP reps and the social workers were very sincere about trying to help my daughter get to graduation. However, after these meetings were over, when her health caused her to be absent for weeks at a time, we got crickets. No one ever contacted us to ask, "Where's Leanna? How is Leanna?" In our schools, I think we do a good job at giving recognition to star athletes and academic superstars. We also do a good job at providing support for kids dealing with teen pregnancy and broken bones. And I'm sure a good amount of attention goes to those kids that cause hallway fights. But what about when the challenge is invisible? Chronic invisible illness and chronic invisible sadness is such a challenge. These kids who are desperately hanging on need to know that they matter too. Something about hanging on just in itself is an achievement for these kids. It took five years, but my daughter graduated. The week before the ceremony, I met with the school principal, a sort of exit interview. I had some questions. I asked why, during my child's extended absences, no one ever called to check on their student. Why didn't the captain in JROTC have the kids send a card? Why didn't kids at Hope recognize her for overcoming her challenges? Why didn't the social worker come to the house as she had promised? These small things would have meant a lot to her and would have lifted her aloneness. Knowing that the school missed her would have meant the world. At the time of this exit interview, there was one more week of school left, and the principal had one week to do something, something for the student who had stubbornly refused to give up. If he had spent five minutes with her, that would have been meaningful, but it didn't happen. Leanna walked across the stage on June 16th. It had been a hard journey, full of experiences she had missed, but the final disappointment was those crickets from the principal's office. Fast forward to July 13th, and I attended a public workshop entitled "Mental Health Resources for Local Youth." I listened very carefully. I heard a very well-meaning speaker share efforts made to help kids suffering from mental health issues. What I heard was task force, committees, studies. I can tell you emphatically that students don't need committees. They need compassion. They need caring and human kindness. And because this is a budget meeting, none of those cost any money. Thank you.
Thank you. The Marshall family, Curtis or Heather, are you here? All right. Sonia Lemus, followed by Jim Hewitt and Paige Donovan.
Mi nombre es Sonia Lemus. Doig gracias a Dios por este momento. Y como madre de familia, me alegro de saber que tengo una mano amiga al llegar a la escuela, que tenemos la misma cultura, un mismo idioma, y que me sabe escuchar. Igualmente ella me comunica lo que pasa con mi hijo en la escuela, y mi hijo también tiene la confianza de ir con ella y contárselo. Y eso de que nos sabe escuchar como a padres y a hijos nos hace sentir más cómodos y con más confianza. Agradecemos también porque nos informan de muchos programas que nos benefician como padres y como comunidad. Por ejemplo, de dónde podemos recibir clases de inglés gratis, de dónde recibir apoyo económico, y eso nos hace ver que también les interesa nuestro progreso. Y podemos hacer mención de otras actividades realizadas en la comunidad donde van, saludan y reparten comida en nuestro vecindario. Y si en caso lo hacen en la escuela, pues nos mandan información con nuestros hijos. Además, procuran que nuestros hijos tengan una Navidad con regalos, y eso los hace muy felices. En particular, este verano cuando se canceló el programa de escuela de verano, nuestro enlace familiar buscó fondos para proveer por lo menos un programa de tres semanas para 30 alumnos de la escuela. Sin este programa, los estudiantes estarían en la casa sin la oportunidad de aprender más. Y sé que muchos enlaces familiares dejan sus trabajos por otros trabajos donde les ofrecen beneficios, y realmente nuestra comunidad la necesitamos. Y necesitamos que ustedes aseguren que nuestros enlaces familiares se queden en nuestras escuelas. Y la mejor manera es que ustedes la apoyen y aseguren que reciban beneficios. Por favor, apóyenlas para que ellas puedan seguir apoyando tanto a nosotros como a nuestros hijos. Gracias y Dios les bendiga.
So I will translate. The Marshals were also representing Bucknell, so I'll take their three minutes. Good evening, members of the school board. As a mother, I am glad to know I have a friend that has the same culture and speaks the same language to offer me a helping hand and to welcome me when I arrive at school. She tells me what is happening with my son at school, and if something happens at school, my son trusts her and will go to tell her. The fact that we have someone who knows how to listen to our children and to us as parents makes us feel more comfortable and more confident. We are also grateful that she informs us of many programs that benefit us as parents and our overall community. For example, where we can receive a free English class, where to receive economic assistance, and that makes us see that she is also interested in our success. I can speak of other activities they help organize and promote in the community, like when, one where they distribute food in our neighborhood. If this takes place at school, they send information to us with our children. In addition, they make sure our children have Christmas gifts, which makes them so happy. In particular, this summer, when summer school was eliminated, our family liaison looked for funds to at least provide a three-week summer school program for 30 students in the school. Without this program, these students would have been at home and lost the opportunity to learn more. I know that many parent liaisons leave their jobs for other positions where they are offered benefits. Truly, our community needs to ensure that they stay in our schools. The best way is for you to support them and ensure they receive benefits. Please support them so they can continue to support us and our children. May God bless you.
Thank you. Jim Hewitt, followed by Paige Donovan. Paige Donovan. And Ms. Donovan will be followed by Jo Newber and Johnny Johnson.
Buenos noches. Mi nombre es Paige Donovan. Good evening. My name is Paige Donovan. I go to Lower Ridge Elementary School. I am in the Spanish immersion program. I will be reading you a letter that the entire fourth, fifth, and sixth-grade immersion students signed. Dear school board, we believe that you should not cut the immersion program because of budget cuts. That would mean some of our friends would leave our school and be forced to go to another school. There are many reasons why you should not cut the immersion program, but here are a few. One, being bilingual means you can get a better job and actually help the country and the world. Two, according to a 2012 New York Times article, being bilingual makes you smarter. Three, again according to the same 2012 New York Times article, bilinguals are more adapted to solving puzzles than monolinguals. These are only a few reasons, a few of the many reasons why you should keep the immersion program. Please keep the immersion program. We do not want to be separated. Sincerely, the fourth, fifth, and sixth-grade immersion students.
Thank you. Jo Newber, followed by Johnny Johnson.
My name is Jo Newber. On behalf of our 1,500 class-size counts advocates across Virginia, I want to thank the FCPS staff for leading the way in supporting Regulation 1302.1 to ensure that no elementary child sits in a class above 29. We hope the FCPS school board will continue to cap elementary class sizes at 29 to ensure that our elementary classes and the pockets that are overly large are fixed. Even if you end up changing the staffing formulas as proposed by the Task Force, and I know you're facing some fiscal constraints, this is critical, because we have many pockets of overly large class sizes still. Many of our class parents, teachers, students have contacted state legislators this year, asking them to support state-level bipartisan bills to reduce existing state elementary school class-size caps in parallel with what you've done here locally, as well as to ask for disclosure on middle and high school class sizes and safety lab caps for all of our science labs. FCPS has long said that it supports transparency. We ask FCPS to lead the way again, walk the walk, don't just talk the talk, and report class size for middle and high school classes as you do for elementary classes. This data will also help you figure out whether we are complying with current state law. For example, Virginia requires all school districts to maintain a ratio of 24 students to every one English teacher. I have no idea if that's being complied with, because we don't see the class-size data for middle and high schools. And we know our English teachers are working long and hard, and I know there are many of you who have English teachers in the family, and you can relate to what I'm saying. The other thing about this data, if you disclose middle and high school class sizes, it would help you understand what your lab, your science labs look like. And I would like to bring to your attention the recommendations of the ASTA, the ACS, and the National Science Teachers Association, which all recommend a safety cap of 24 for our science labs. It is your duty of care to help support this, because we don't want to have tragedies like we have seen in the recent past. You have demonstrated your concern for student health and wellness in the past with the decision to vote for later high school start times and more healthful cafeteria food. We hope you will also support safety and science classes as your duty of care to our teachers and students. Dr. Garza has told us several times that FCPS could cap its science lab classes at 24 without additional resources. If principals were directed to make that a priority, I ask that you do that. And for the interest of your teachers and students this year, disclose middle and high school classes and continue to support Regulation 1302.1. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Johnny Johnson.
Good evening. My name is Johnny Johnson. I'm the grandfather to four children, currently in the Fairfax County School System. Yesterday, you heard from both my daughter Jenna and granddaughter Savannah. To start with, I'd like to thank you for providing the opportunity to speak and to express my appreciation for all your efforts as a school board. I know that you serve with the best interests of the youth of Fairfax County at heart. It is with those best interests of Fairfax County youth that I speak as an advocate for the retention of fourth-grade strings. Let me address several issues in this regard. First, and as was mentioned by a previous speaker, it has been conclusively proved that participation in instrumental music enhances the learning achievement of youth. It is also to be determined that the earlier this experience, the greater the benefit. From this perspective, including strings at the third or even the second-grade level would be better. Delaying strings from fourth to fifth grade can only be viewed as detrimental to the positive effects experienced through music education. Secondly, in a similar vein, it is also well documented is that talent development is also dramatically affected by the age at which a child begins their studies. Motor skills, the workings of the mind, and other factors are all in development in children. The older the child, the more effort that is needed to acquire and learn the skills necessary to play an instrument. Thirdly, I'd like to point out that the proposed budget savings are just not a reality. The budget cut contemplates an average saving of around $14,800 per school. That's 2 million divided by 142 schools, for you math buffs. Since programming costs for fourth-grade strings is negligible, that saving has to come from personnel cuts, using the beginning salary levels plus benefits that would be required, cutting one teacher for every four elementary schools. Since most string teachers are tenorant, that is, they teach at at least two schools, half the required cuts to meet the $2 million proposed saving, that would leave only one string teacher for every four schools. Sorry, ladies and gentlemen, can't be done. Most string teachers are currently teaching six classes a day, split between two schools, and eating their lunch in the car as they travel between schools. Cutting a class per day per school still leaves the string teacher with the impossible task of covering two classes per day per school, or eight classes per day, at four different schools. Once again, can't realistically be done. With short travel distances and an ideal schedule and ideal space issues, they might be able to do three schools, but never four. Additionally, you've heard the statistics that last evening, that about 80% of the string programs are set up around the triple-T schedule. When the kids, when the fourth graders that are cut loose from the strings have to go somewhere, when the kids taking fourth-grade strings are thrown back into the general triple-T classroom, they still have to have a teacher. Whoops, there goes the cut in personnel. Or remember, and we're talking about 7,500 kids, representing over one-half of the fourth grade, all fourth graders. Finally, of great concern to me is the looming deterioration of the underlying fabric of the school, Fairfax County School System. I envision the idea of death by a thousand cuts, where piece by piece, the things that make this district such an outstanding school system are sliced away until all that is left are the skeletal remains. I can only trust in the integrity of the board to not I can only trust in the integrity of the board to not lose sight of the vision that has made Fairfax County Schools great. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to take a moment before I get to Mr. Tucker, just to see if any of our speakers who had signed up earlier have not have come yet. So I'm going to start with Nicolay Guinea. Wemmy Peters. Ted Gagnon. Curtis or Heather Marshall. Jim Hewitt. All right, thank you, Mr. Tucker. Mr. Jason Tucker, followed by David Miller and Agnes Mallard.
Good evening. My name is Jason Tucker. I'm a 1989 graduate of Robert E. Lee High School, and I currently have two students at Lee right now, a sophomore and a junior. I'm here to talk to you about a few things. Let's start with the advanced academic program at the high school level. We currently have two programs at the high school level, AP and IB. At the IB schools, likely, on average, 86% of the students are not attempting to get the IB diploma. 86%. Taken across the Fairfax County School System, 425 students got the IB diploma last year. That is approximately 3.2% of the 13,000 diplomas. What I'm getting at here is if you were to cut IB, that would not be a severe impact on 97% of the students in the system. Well, you say other people take, other students take IB classes, but they, you know, but they don't get diploma. Well, if they're doing that, they might as well be taking AP classes. It's a fact that on your budget, IB costs twice as much per student served, approximately $500 per student served to $246 per student served for AP. It's interesting, and there's an article in the Washington Post quotes a former school board member when they first put in IB at Mount Vernon. The goal was to reduce the convince the middle-class families not to leave certain schools. The ironic part is that when you put those programs in, that those certain schools, you gave people basically legal justification to say, I don't want to go to that school, I want to go to that school because I no longer have AP here, I want to go over there. And what it's really done is driven people from basically your underperforming poorer schools, such as Lee, to your South Counties, your Lake Braddicks of the world. So it's 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 basically, in fact, last year, there were 88 students who had placed out of Lee for AP. The number was so small coming into Lee, they couldn't even tell me because it would violate privacy violations. It was, that means it was less than five. That's what we were looking at last year, just between AP and IB. Lee lost plenty of other students other than that. If if the county board is not willing to make a program, cut a program that basically affects a small number of students, drives transfers, and costs more than an alternative program such as AP, I'm not sure what you're willing to cut. And maybe you're not willing to cut anything, but this is a place to start. Lee has been severely decimated by many of these changes. I think it's perfectly legitimate for parents to pay for IB or AP fees. I think that's a fair thing to do. I think it's perfectly fair to charge families to transfer. In the bigger picture, lots of your programs have set up a basic pupil placement and program programmatic differences, set up a transfer scurry everywhere, everywhere you can go to get out of a certain school. Many of Lee's AAP students leave the pyramid either in elementary or middle school and never return. We never see them again. You can imagine what this does to school performance. I bring, I favor any changes that can bring students back to the Lee pyramid. That would include reducing AP or bringing AAP students back to the elementary and middle school, all A, all elementary and middle schools. If you can't do it at all elementary schools and middle schools, bring them back to the pyramid at least. As for immersion, I am nothing against immersion, but I have a feeling, if you probably dig into the numbers, you'll probably find that the people who can take advantage of this, particularly when it's a magnet program, if there's no transportation available, are not your free reduced lunch students, which means they get left behind at a school and the wealthier kids are fleeing. So that's what I'd just like to say. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. David Miller, followed by Agnes Mallard, followed by N.J. Cooper. David Miller? Agnes Mallard? N.J. Cooper? Mr. Cooper, hello.
How you doing?
I'm well.
I've been on this earth sixty-some-odd years, nobody ever called me N.J.
I don't know. That's what I got right here. I apologize.
No problem. I've been called worse and called better. My name is Ralph Cooper. Good evening, Mr. Superintendent, board members, community members, and Fairfax County Public School staff. None of this happens without any of you all. My name is Ralph Cooper. I'm a community advocate for education, and I'm also a member of the NAACP. I'm here to talk about something that most folks don't talk about, and that's our early childhood program, and also address the fact that for about 10 running years or more, we've been having a waiting list for three- and four-year-olds. This means they're not ready to attend school when they come in. I have a four-year-old grandson, and he's all fired up to learn, but he gets very frustrated when he's not with his peers. I've also had experience of working with these parents when I did the Parent Handbook, and I would go down and talk to parents, and the parents would express some concern about why one child was able to get into feast up in his star and the damage that was done to the other child that was handling that. The recommendation that I have here from the NAACP is very simple. We would like for you to make a budget amendment. You already have identified some money already for a spirit of childhood development. We recommend two things. First of all, find some seed money, if it's not that difficult, for CIP to get some type of feasibility study to find out what is the best project to start reducing the waiting list. The second one is, basically, you need to move some money down to the lower-end schools who don't have a lot of money so they could get the special attention and teachers they need so that you can accelerate the achievement gap. I'm going to use that word one more time. Accelerate the pace of the achievement gap because we keep constantly moving at a very slow pace, and it really doesn't look like we're accomplishing anything. I will close out with the following activities, following things. I've been in this county for 20-plus years. I've also been around and seen the chairman of Joint Chiefs of Staff, CEOs, and everybody else talk about the importance of early childhood development and our involvement. We must, if we're going to survive as a county and take care of the jobs of, you have to take care of these kids. It's a no-brainer. You invested them young, you get a return on their investment earlier so they can participate in these programs. I thank you very much for your time and effort. I may add one other thing. I put the name of the new president and education chair of the NAACP on this sheet so you can get the right people so we can get us moving. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper. Carolyn, good, God be Kenny, Kelly, excuse me, Carmen Fernandez, and then Eleanor Abbott. Caroline Kelly?
Good evening, and thank you very much for this opportunity. I I am here to support the initiative of providing benefits to the parent liaisons. And I have been, I am now a retired social worker from Arlington County, and I am the director of a nonprofit organization called Hispanics Against Child Abuse and Neglect. We have many preventive services in the community, and mainly our work is concentrated, but in other places concentrated mainly in the area of Bailey's Crossroads. And it is with, through the parent liaisons that we can make successful programs because they know their community, they know and understand the issues that these parents bring to them. Through the parent liaisons, they are, the parent liaisons are building bridges with families who otherwise would be disconnected and isolated. And that's where the problems start, and no one knows, but if they have, like it says here, the hearts of the schools, but not only the hearts, in them, the school has has hands and voices and arms to outreach, and through them, the programs and the children are better served. For our community organizations such as HACAN, which are community-based, their networking and the knowledge that they have of the parents' needs and problems guide us in providing those services to the parents and to the children that are relevant. The parent liaisons know it, know their parents, and give us the information that we can then distribute. Through their guidance and through their support, we can give meaningful services to these families. I I am very much in support. Not not only do they work with the families, in these times of diverse populations, many of these parent liaisons have the language capacity and the culture to reach out to our vibrant immigrant diverse population. So please, these qualified professionals, community leaders who are fighting for the closeness of those parents to the schools and to their children, we promote and we ask and urge the board to make them receive the full retirement benefits and the health insurance which they deserve. They work many hours with much devotion and much dedication. So please.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Eleanor Abbott, followed by Julie Strandley and Mabel Zabalos.
Good evening. First of all, thank you very much for extending the budget hearings a second night. I was here last night, and I know you guys have already heard from many people, so I really appreciate you taking the time to hear me out. My name is Eleanor Abbott, and I'm a strings teacher at Willow Springs Elementary School in Fairfax, Centerville Elementary School, and Greenbrier West Elementary School in Chantilly. I'm here tonight to speak to you about the importance of continuing the fourth, excuse me, fourth-grade strings program. I'm not a Fairfax County native. I grew up in various other states and have participated in many strings programs since I was 10 years old. Out of all the programs I've been a part of, I can say without a doubt that the music program here at FCPS is the highest level I've ever witnessed firsthand. FCPS has arguably one of the best strings programs in the nation, partly due to the fact that we start in fourth grade. It's what attracted me and many other highly qualified educators to teach in this area. To cut a program that is well-renowned and has thrived for 50 years would be a slap in the face to the whole community. One of my current fourth-grade students has a history of ADHD and behavioral issues. I remember reading his IEP back in September and worrying about how well he would do in strings. Since then, he has turned out to be a model student and one of the top of his class. Every week, he comes into my room eager to show off what he's practiced at home. When I call the students to attention, he's always the first one to encourage his other classmates to focus. A few weeks ago, I emailed his mother to highlight his achievements, and last week during our first fourth-grade concert, his mom came up to me to thank me for my email. She said it was such a delight to receive good news from school because it doesn't happen very often. These are the types of students whom we teach, and I'm sure every single music teacher in this room has at least a dozen stories to tell that is just like mine. Not only do we teach students who will one day make a living from performing music, but more often, we teach students who may otherwise not excel in other subjects and see music as a new opportunity for success. We teach children from all walks of life and all parts of the learning spectrum. Yes, it is possible to begin strings in later grades. We could start strings in fifth grade or sixth grade. We could start strings in middle school. But consider this. Learning an instrument has been proven to enhance fine motor skills, auditory discrimination, vocabulary, nonverbal reasoning, language fluency, and brain plasticity. It encourages creativity, inquisitive inquisitiveness, responsibility, deferred gratification, intrinsic motivation, time management, goal-setting, self-reflection, a sense of community, project-based learning, and a multicultural curriculum, just to name a few things. Also, there are studies that theorize that the prime age for developing musical skills is between birth and nine years old, during which a child's developing brain can process and understand music more fluently. Coincidentally, what is the average age of a fourth grader in America? Nine years old. In light of all these cognitive, social, and emotional benefits, it would seem more intuitive to begin a strong instrumental music program earlier rather than later. And as my colleagues have already pointed out yesterday, the idea that eliminating fourth-grade strings would actually save any money is questionable at best. An investment in music education is an investment in transferable life skills, so I implore you to please consider preserving the strings program. Thank you.
Julie Strandley, followed by Mabel Zabalos and Maria Chirisa Laguna.
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity to present my views on Fairfax County's FY 2018 budget. My husband and I are the proud parents of two current Fairfax County students who attend or have attended Columbia Elementary, Glasgow Middle School, Holmes Middle School, and Annandale High School. And just to note, Holmes, Glasgow, and Annandale are all IBMYP or IB schools. In fact, our daughter Carolyn Lemons, an Annandale High School sophomore, testified last night in support of full funding for the International Baccalaureate IB and IBMYP Middle Years Program. She also informed you that she intends to pursue the IB diploma, and she, in fact, stayed at Annandale High School because it was so important for her to finish the IBMYP curriculum and the certificate. My response to the gentleman who opposed it was perhaps adding IBMYP to the feeder schools of Lee High School would create more of a balance and more of an interest, and I'll get into that more in a minute. I'm very honored to serve as the president of Holmes Middle School PTA. Our school is home to students who originate in more than 50 countries, amazing, wonderful, and welcoming diversity. We are very fortunate to live in this neighborhood. While I have always been very involved in my children's school, I have contributed more than hundreds of hours of volunteer time to Holmes in the just the past few months. Why is that? Because all things in Fairfax are unfortunately not created equal. Students in certain parts of the county have many more advantages than others. Some schools with PTAs have budgets that exceed or range around $100,000, and they have corporate sponsors. Our PTA budget was $4,000 last year, and I'm working to change that. These schools, same schools, tend to have robust after-school programming. In most cases, wealthier PTAs provide teacher grants and other funding opportunities that make after-school programming and field trips possible. And these programs are extremely important to augmenting and lighting the spark in our children's learning, drive for learning. Teachers are not otherwise compensated for sponsoring after-school programming. However, I just learned that TJ teachers received 8% of their salary to sponsor after-school activities. This would likely explain why TJ has 128 after-school programs and Annandale High School has very few. Holmes PTA budget, again, was $4,000. We need your help to level the playing field, and it is very important to our schools in Mason and other similarly similarly situated schools. We have between 56 and 72% of our middle and high school students receive free and reduced meals, and we will never be able to raise $100,000 to make that up. The programs briefly that I encourage you to fund, which I've already mentioned, please fully fund and promote and expand the IB and IBMYP programs. This program opens doors and creates learning opportunities not otherwise available to every student and child in our district. Guidance counselors look to IB class completion, not AP, for whether or not a student will succeed and graduate in college. Please note that. That is very important. We also find that families move to our neighborhoods precisely because we have IBMYP and IB. Please do not take that away from us.
Thank you, ma'am. I need you to finish.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Mabel Zabalos, follow. Go ahead, go ahead.
Good evening. My son is the sixth-grade student in Glasgow Middle School. He is a good student since he was the first- Since he was to first grade, he was advanced math class. When he went to Glasgow, he was put a lower math class. I went to the parent liaison, Mrs. Donovan, and she helped me arrange to meet with the teacher and a counselor to make sure my son was put in the correct class. I want my son to go to the college. I didn't know what type of course and he need to take so that when he graduate from his high school, he can go to college. Mrs. Donovan has explained to me the course my son should be taken. She was also let me know about program that can support my son so that he can go to college. I am very careful for this information because I know that education will help my son successful in life. I'm sorry, my English is not too well, but I try it. Because of Mrs. Donovan, I learn about the English class offered at Glasgow. I am not taking them. I also participate in the 10-weeks parents' programs. Mrs. Donovan encouraged to me to take every time I go to the school. I have a warm, to friendly, become from Mrs. Donovan. She takes the time to listen to me and my son only in the sixth grade, but I know as he goes to seventh and eighth grade, that Mrs. Donovan will be there to support to me and my son. I cannot imagine to school without someone like her. I am here tonight to support the position to parents liaison. I think every school should be have someone like Mrs. Donovan to help parents and to core, courage, students, people who take this job and very good their job understand. I ask that, I ask what you please provide beneficial to parents liaison so that they can stay in our school and continue help families like me. Thank you. I'm sorry, but what I want to say is she helped me too much in the school and my son too. Thank you.
We have Maria Teresa Laguna, followed by Ronald Wilcox and Lea Anna Montesinos. Ronald Wilcox.
Members of the Fairfax County School Board, I'm concerned about the direction and spending on public schools. This view is shared by Fairfax County citizens, demonstrated by the failure of the meals tax referendum, which suffered a massive defeat in a year that county voters voted Democrat. The referendum was promoted by the county as a $90 million benefit to the public schools, and it still failed. The message of taxpayers to the school board was clear: Stop wasting money and make real cuts. The school board needs to set real priorities and make hard choices. That is why you were elected. A good goal for Fairfax County Public Schools is to reduce wasteful spending, to waste, sorry. A good goal for the Fairfax County Public Schools is to reduce wasteful spending and to get the school budget down to less than 50% of the county budget. This can be achieved without academic harm by reducing the mission of this county schools. The schools should not be, try to be a nanny state and achieve every social welfare goal. If there are services that the school board thinks should be provided outside the core mission of academic success, they should seek private dollars for those nonessential projects. One area that blows a hole in the Fairfax County school budget is the education of the DACA program children. The DACA program amounts to state-sponsored kidnapping, and we should not cooperate with this. The program lures children from their parents overseas, and they come to America essentially becoming orphans, and when the school bus drops them back at the group home, they are essentially placed under house arrest, under the court, under the control of their court-appointed guardians. Fairfax County School, Public Schools is complicit in this kidnapping by facilitating the education of those now wards of the state. Fairfax County Public School Board should end this uncompassionate, costly cooperation with the DACA program and denounce this mass orphanization of children from other countries in Fairfax County, and demand that these children be returned to their parents for a proper, parentally-guarded upbringing. Also, sanctuary city policies such as harboring illegal aliens who then illegally stress local communities with tax burdens, the school board should object. I recommend that you convert pensions and other benefits to defined contribution plans, fire underperforming teachers so we can pay the best teachers competitive wages, non-competitive teacher salaries, and not setting enough, sorry. Not having a competitive salary system and not setting aside enough money for capital improvement is unacceptable and poor management. Thank you.
Thank you. Lea Anna Montesinos, followed by Mariah Clark, and then Sarah Clark. Ms. Montesinos? Mariah Clark? And Sarah? Are you coming, going to come together?
Yeah.
I hear you.
By the way, I forgot to put something in on the paper.
That's okay. You can tell us.
Hallo, guten Abend. That means hello, good evening in German. My name is Moira Clark. I am in the German immersion program at Orange Hunt Elementary School. I am in third grade. I think it is important for immersion programs to be here because learning different languages can help us understand about the culture and way of living in different countries. I think it is important to understand about other countries because if we understand about them, then we can interact with them while we know what to expect. Another reason I like German immersion is because I have relatives in Germany and I like to be able to speak a different language. I'm also in Kinderchor at my school. Kinderchor is an after-school program that is a German children's choir. I like learning traditional songs from a narrow country because it helps me to understand the culture, culture of that country. When I'm at home, I like to speak German, so my family already knows some German. I taught my brother a song from Kinderchor. About half the teachers at my school will teach German immersion, so if immersion in were cut at several teachers, is would, is would be, would, would, would no, would not have jobs at my school. I have been in German immersion since first grade, so if there were no more German immersion, I would feel as if part of my existence was challenged. Thank you for listening to my speech.
Thank you for sharing. Sarah Clark, followed by Kristi Donovan, followed by Nisha Robbins.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Clark. I am the parent of the third grader who just spoke, who's in the German immersion program at Orange Hunt, and of two future students who you may have seen trying to disturb things up in the back all night. I thank you for the opportunity on the second night to express to you our preferences. Can you hear me? Closer. Okay. It's echoing to me. Okay. Can you hear me now? No. Yes, his end nose. Okay. I'm here to remind you why we have a language immersion program. I know you've heard the data over and over again from the other parents about the benefits of two, of two language instruction to students regardless of their home language. We don't speak the target language in our home, but we still get the improved working memory, the better selective attention, the superior executive function, and of course, what we all care about, the math and science scores that are higher for students both in English and in non-English languages. For the non-native English speakers, the dual-way immersion is the most cost-effective way to bring them up to grade level. For the community, an increasing pool of people who literally speak each other's language is critical to meet both our current and future financial and security needs. The Fairfax County Economic Development Authority actively recruits businesses from abroad. They have offices in Berlin, in Bangalore, and across the world. If we don't speak those languages, we are a considerably less attractive place for them to relocate businesses. In my volunteer work locally, we're desperately in need of people who can speak the other language. There are 50 of us, and two speak another language, and we don't meet the needs of our community. Nationally, I can speak to you as a professor of government and global security studies. Congressional hearings recently referred to our foreign language capabilities as a national security crisis. We don't have the critical language speakers that we need, and I can't tell you what those language skills are going to be in 20 years. 20 years ago, nobody would have predicted Farsi, but the students who currently have foreign language skills are the ones who are going to be able to learn. I watch my students now. The ones who have the language skills in French or Spanish are the ones who are more easily able to learn the third language, to learn the ones that they need to know and can figure out how to read the Russian and the Korean newspapers to figure out what they're supposed to be reporting on. These aren't luxuries that we trot out at cocktail parties. Those are necessities, that we need to know these languages, and what they learn now impacts their ability to help us and help our community tomorrow. We all know there's not enough money. We all know we're chasing after too few dollars, so we need the programs that are most effective. Language immersion is most effective for the non-English speakers and for the non-target language speakers, both of them to learn across. It's cheaper and more effective than English-only ASL. It's cheaper and more effective than bringing them out once a week to another classroom with another teacher. They're getting their language instruction in the state-mandated subject areas. They have to learn math. They have to learn science. They're learning those in their languages. It's why in our house, immersion looks like talking about the phases of the moon in German. I can't understand it. I assume she's right. Her worksheets say she's right. They talk about fractions in German. Her worksheets say she's right, so I hope she is because I can't speak it, but she seems to understand it. When she talks to her German relatives, I don't know what they're talking about. I think I recognize something about birthday, but they can understand and speak fluently back and forth to each other. We used to be unique for having immersion. If we cut it, we're going to be unique in our area for not having it, so I urge you to keep us moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Kristi Donovan, followed by Nisha Robbins and Michael Vogely.
Good evening, everyone. First, I want to say I actually took the time to watch the work video, or the video from the work session last Monday, and I really appreciate the support that you have all shown for language immersion. I know that eight out of nine of you suggested that you didn't want to touch language immersion, so I know that there's a lot of support here tonight for this. Last year, I came here to tell you about the experience that my fifth-grade daughter who you heard earlier tonight at Laurel Ridge has had at the Spanish language immersion program at Laurel Ridge. Sadly, as we knew this deficit was approaching, I am here again to speak to the value and benefits of language immersion. I want you to listen, I want you to close your eyes, and I want you to listen to the sounds of my younger daughter's kindergarten immersion class singing their morning song in Spanish two weeks ago. If you could see that video, you would see the tremendous joy on these children's faces as they sing these songs in Spanish, and they know what these words mean. The only one I know is "by la," and that's when they start doing their dance. So it's just, it's heartbreaking to even think that we would lose something like this. You've heard many facts and figures about the benefits of immersion. You heard them last year, you've heard them last night, you've heard them tonight. I'm here to remind you that the elimination of this program would affect real people, not just the students and teachers involved, but all of the potential future interactions our children will have with the world. There is nothing we need more in this world right now than compassion, love, and understanding for other cultures. Through exposure to another language and culture, our children are learning these things, and they're learning them from people other than their parents. They're getting, for me, but they're getting it from their teachers and their community around them. So while FCPS once again considers eliminating language immersion, I encourage you to remember that this is a curricular approach that is expanding nationwide. In just the last month, I have seen articles about expansion in Spokane, Washington, Portland, Eugene, Oregon, Teton County, Idaho, Scottsdale, Arizona, and the Nash Rocky Mountain School District in Tennessee. That's just in the last month that I've read about that. In fact, in the November election, California lifted an 18-year restriction on bilingual education, which is projected to rapidly increase bilingual education statewide. They're actually expecting serious teacher shortages because they're planning to expand this so broadly. We know language immersion provides a multitude of benefits, including comparisons that show immersion students outperform students who only learn English. If you want better test scores and higher school ratings, you really should be talking about expansion of these programs, not elimination. Thank you very much for your time. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you, school board members, for listening to all of us parents and some of us children speak. The reason I've decided to speak here is for my three daughters, all which are enrolled in Fairfax County Public Schools, and their education means everything to me. In the last four years that my children have been enrolled in the German immersion program at Orange Hunt, I've seen them develop a fondness and love for the German language and for their culture, and it's a great thing to have seen. Over the past 22 years, the German immersion program at Orange Hunt has built a very vibrant community within the parents, teachers, and has fostered great student relationships. I am sure that the other language immersion schools in other parts of the county have also built these similar relationships, and these are things that would be destroyed should the funding of the immersion programs be taken away. On top of this, the kids, if they were to leave these programs, they would be heartbroken. They would miss their friends. The school dynamics would change dramatically. Amazing teachers would be left on the sidelines. Staff and other parents would also be trying to find a new role within their communities. It seems on the surface that eliminating language immersion may provide some immediate cost savings, but I believe you will find that there will be more spending in rerouting these children and students into different base schools, producing larger class sizes and costs coming from bus transportation. In addition, it is possible that the reputational risk of removing this program is immense, and many have not considered this when dealing with this cost savings of cutting this program. The language immersion program is one of the best within the United States, and Fairfax County has been the standard bearer for a long time. Should this program be eliminated, just when other programs are, and other regional counties are coming online, it would be a disservice. I think it would be also important to remember that a lot of people are coming to this area for these language immersion programs. If they decide not to come to this area, there would be a huge tax hit from the families moving to here and also the employers that sometimes seek out relocating to Fairfax County just because of these language immersion programs. I'm thinking within the German language program, VW, Airbus, and SAP have huge headquarters within Fairfax County. They came here because of these language immersion programs. They might decide differently next time around when there's a huge enrollment for new staffing. Lastly, it goes without saying that once a program is eliminated, it is very rarely ever resurrected. Thank you very much for your time.
Larissa Marion, followed by Marty Abbott.
Dear members of the school board, I am a strings teacher at...
Dear members of the school board, I am a strings teacher at Belvedere and Woodbury Elementary. Of my 286 students, 146 are fourth graders and 60 are, yes, third graders. I wish to propose that instead of placing fourth-grade strings on the cutting block every year, we should be considering how to grow our instrumental program, how to expand it to include younger grades with more space for individual attention and more time for community outreach and deeper performance opportunities for all students. As an immigrant coming from poverty myself, I come from a country where instrumental music is not available in every school, but in only one county, in only one school per county. And so students in my native country, Romania, who study music are part of an elite considered to be talented. But here in America, I have been so inspired because here instrumental music is available in public schools widely, and this means that it is not accessible only to an elite number of students based on arbitrary circumstance, but that it is accessible to all, and we believe that every child can and will succeed in music, given the right support and environment. And I wish to share a few anonymous of hundreds of examples that I've encountered as a teacher of how the most important tool, time, has helped my students. Both my schools are Title I, and in our communities, private lessons are out of reach for the great many. Two years ago, my student Jay was in fourth grade. She played a beautiful violin due to the county's IFA program, and she also joined the after-school Strings Club. Over several months, Jay blossomed into a most confident player. I called her mom one evening to find out that she was a single parent struggling to raise her daughter. We spoke in Spanish. And knowing that her daughter was successful in school made her cry, and it made me cry. My student L is in the fifth-grade advanced class and has started to learn the violin in fourth grade. Like many other students on free and reduced lunch, L cannot afford private lessons. Nonetheless, L practices the violin daily, often times through Skype practices with friends, and gets involved in every opportunity in strings. A has told me that she plans to become a doctor to save lives when she will grow up. My student Joe plays the violin in fourth grade, even though she has only two fingers on each hand and on each leg. Starting in third grade has been helpful in establishing a good foundation for Joe, and now she frequently helps other students in her class, taking a leadership role. My students progress because they were able to try and try again over time at their own rhythm. Time, in the equation of education, time is the most precious variable. It is power that we give learners and teachers. Cutting one year of strings education would take from that power. We must grow accessibility of music to all and not diminish it. Empower us, empower our students. Please do not cut fourth-grade strings.
Thank you.
Good evening, school board members and interim superintendent Lockhart. My name is Marty Abbott, and I'm executive director of the American Council on the Teaching of Foreign Languages, a national organization dedicated to the promotion of language learning. I am also a very proud former Fairfax County teacher and administrator. I taught at Marshall High School for 14 years and worked in the World Language Office and Instructional Services for 15 years before becoming the Director of High School Instruction. In fact, I was working in the World Language Office in March of 1989 when the Fairfax School Board voted to implement the language immersion program in eight elementary schools. After the original eight programs were established, there was a concerted effort on the part of the school system to expand strategically, both in the location of the programs and the languages offered, to make the program accessible to as many students as possible. In those days, implementing an immersion program was groundbreaking. Fairfax County was one of the first school systems in the entire country to implement a Japanese immersion program. In 1994, Emperor Akihito and the Empress made a historic visit to the United States. They included one school in their 16-day tour, Great Falls Elementary. In 1995, Fairfax students were invited to demonstrate their language skills before a Senate Subcommittee hearing on the lack of language skills in the U.S. There was an audible gasp by the committee members when the students got up and solved math problems in Japanese. The Fairfax County Economic Development Authority, as you've previously heard, routinely used photos of students in the immersion program learning math and science in another language in advertisements to attract national and international businesses to Fairfax County. This school system has rightly been referred to as a lighthouse district, leading the way in providing excellent opportunities for realizing the vision of language education for all students in both the immersion and the FLS programs. And with the current Fairfax County portrait of a graduate calling for students to communicate effectively in multiple languages, to make meaningful connections, the school system's commitment to language education has not wavered. Through the challenging budget times, and I know that Mrs. Strauss and Mr. Moon in particular remember this, FCPS school board's support for the immersion program has been steadfast. However, it's important to note that immersion programs are no longer groundbreaking, and they're quite the norm around the country, as you've heard. The rest of the country has caught up to Fairfax County. Entire states such as Utah and Delaware have provided funding for elementary immersion programs specifically to raise a multilingual citizenry, to attract and retain international businesses to their respective states. New York has passed a state law that if more than 20 students of the same heritage language are enrolled in a school, they must be given instruction in their native language, giving rise to an increasing number of immersion programs in New York City. Although the exact numbers are difficult to confirm, at least 39 states in the District of Columbia have implemented over 2,000 language programs to date. We now have even more compelling research information, which you've already heard, and it's important with a study that's coming out next month, that we maintain the immersion programs. We cannot allow the beacon in this lighthouse school district to be dimmed by cutting programs that may have once been considered nice to have but are now essential for the future well-being of our children. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to go over our no-show slots, calling those individuals one more time for their opportunity to speak. Nicola Gania. Wemmy Peters. Ted Gagnon. Curtis Marshall. Jim Hewitt. David Miller. Agnes Mallard. Caroline Kelly. Maria Cherisa Laguna. Leana Montesinos. Nisha Robbins. All right. So I have some, we had, that was 11 no-shows, and I have several who have signed up to speak in that no-show slot, those no-show slots, and I will start with Anna Marie Harrison.
Hallo, ich heiße Anna Marie. That means in German, hello, my name is Anna Marie. German immersion means a lot to me because it's fun learning another language and awesome that we can share the opportunity with other students. It would be great for more people to learn a new language, like my sister, who is currently at, well, my younger sister, who is currently at Hunt Valley, to be able to speak German with us. I enjoy German because it gives me the opportunity to learn and speak a new language. And my teachers, all my teachers in German, and every time, have been really nice, and they don't challenge you too much, but they challenge you a bit and don't make stuff too easy. Please don't cut the German immersion. Thank you.
Thank you. Are you Lila Harrison?
Yes.
Yes, all right.
Hallo, ich heiße Lila, which means in German, my name is Lila. My parents took the opportunity to let me learn a foreign language in first grade because they have always wanted to speak a language fluently. Like my youngest sister, I also went to kindergarten at Hunt Valley, and in first grade, they decided to put me in Orange Hunt so I could learn German. German gives you an opportunity to interact with students and teachers in a different language. My sister and I started in first grade, and she has had the same teachers as me in the past years. My family and I really hope that my youngest sister Amber will be able to interact with us in German. I sincerely hope that you won't take the opportunity away from it. Ich hoffe, du hast eine gute Abend und gute Nacht, which means in German, I hope you have a good evening and a good night. Thank you.
Next, I have Maria Eugenias.
Good evening, Superintendent Lockhart and school board members. My name is Maria Eugenias. My husband Peter and I are proud parents of two children, Elizabeth and Andrew, one who's at Lake Braddock and is continuing the Spanish immersion program in seventh grade, and my son Andrew, who is a fifth grader at Ravensworth Elementary. I'm an immigrant that was born in Venezuela and grew up in Fairfax County public schools, learning Spanish and English. It's important for my children to learn Spanish in order to preserve part of their cultural heritage. I'm speaking today to urge the school board to keep the foreign language immersion program in our county's elementary and middle schools. My husband and I have been very happy with the Spanish immersion program at Ravensworth and Lake Braddock. My children enjoy the immersion program. They both have been in the program since first grade. My husband and I have seen so much progress in the children's Spanish language skills. We believe their overall cognitive ability has been enhanced by thinking and working through science and math curriculum in another language. And children are language bungers, and there've been several studies that have shown that immersion at an early age in a foreign language is the best way to ensure fluency. My husband and I decided early on that Spanish immersion program is something that we wanted for our children, and we want them to graduate hopefully with advanced placement credits for college. The language immersion program should not be eliminated in Fairfax County public schools. D.C., Arlington, Prince George's, Montgomery County, school systems are expanding their foreign language and immersion programs, and Fairfax County should be doing the same. To be bilingual will give all our children more opportunities in life. If the foreign language immersion programs are eliminated, many families, including ours, will be affected, and there'll be a negative impact on the schools and the budgets. Since we live outside the boundary of Ravensworth and Lake Braddock, my husband and I drive the children to school every day. My children, like many other out-of-boundary children, will have to return to their base school if immersion program's eliminated. This will cause an unanticipated influx of children back to their base schools, and that would leave many empty seats at our immersion schools, about 100 at Ravensworth. Also, there'll be an increase in transportation costs because all these kids will be going back to their schools and riding the school buses. It's no secret that Fairfax County public schools are the envy of public school systems throughout the United States. This level of excellence has been achieved by our outstanding teachers, very supportive community, parents, children, and of course, your leadership with the vision of keeping our children, expanding their horizons, and looking out for their future. The school needs to keep its current programs to graduate the best students. And in closing, I ask you, Superintendent Lockhart, and you, school board members, please, please, keep the early foreign language immersion programs at the elementary and middle schools. They strengthen Fairfax County public schools in our community. They help our students become invaluable global citizens of our future, which is very important, especially what's happening in today's world. Thank you very much for your time and consideration. Have a good evening.
Thank you. I have Charlotte Wilmore and Jerry Wilmore.
Hola, buenas noches. My name is Charlotte Wilmore. I'm in fourth grade at Oakville Elementary. We do not want to cancel the immersion program. When I was little, I was attending London Town Elementary. While I was there, I met my best friend Hannah. It was a great experience to have learned Spanish and met a great friend. For me and for many of the children that are here, it is very important to have learned, and the other children learn, different languages, because when we are adults who work, it will be important, and you will get better jobs if we have the ability to speak multiple languages. To me, it is special that my parents don't know Spanish. My mom taught me Chinese, and my dad taught me English. I speak both of them fluently, but neither of my parents taught me Spanish. Spanish immersion taught me Spanish, and I want other children to have the opportunity to go to immersion and learn different languages. Thank you.
Thank you.
Me gusta español porque mi mamá y mi papá no saben español, pero mi y mi hermana sí saben, y mis amigos también saben como yo. Español está muy importante porque muchas personas saben español y muchas personas no saben. I like Spanish because my mom and dad don't know Spanish, but me and my sister know Spanish. My friends know Spanish, so do I. Spanish is very important because some kids know Spanish, some kids don't know Spanish. My name is Jerry Wilmore, and I go to Laurel Ridge.
Thank you so much. Natalie Burke, followed by Nicholas Dunn.
Hola, mi nombre es Natalia Burke. In English, that's hello, my name is Natalie Burke. I love Spanish because when we learn Spanish, my teacher makes it fun by using different ways of teaching us. We get to do fun activities while learning. I get to learn something most kids don't get to learn. I don't want the school board to eliminate Spanish because I learn something new every day when I go to school. I can speak fluent Spanish. Please don't take Spanish away.
Thank you.
Hola, mi nombre es Nicholas Dunn. Yo tengo nueve años y estoy en cuarto grado. Hi, my name is Nicholas Dunn. I am nine years old, and I am in fourth grade. I've been in Spanish immersion for all my years at Fort Hunt Elementary School. I love my school, I love my teachers, and I love my Spanish immersion. If we lose so many, if we lose immersion, so many of my favorite teachers will lose their jobs and the class sizes will increase. When my sister was in sixth grade, her afternoon class had 31 students, and I think that is way too much. I think we need to reduce class sizes. Spanish is also important to me because I love learning this language. I love it because I am Cuban-American, and I love to speak Spanish with my grandparents. I love my teachers. Don't make them leave. Please keep immersion going. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And I believe that concludes. Oh, we have some more speakers up here? All right. We have slots for, let me see, one, two, three, four. Three more. We have opportunities for three more of you to speak. And just say your name loudly because I don't have it here in front of me.
Hi, my name is Eliza Farmke, and I go to Fort Hunt Elementary. This is my fourth year in Spanish immersion. Immersion is like the key to a door to culture, language, and friendship. Last summer, I went to Costa Rica, and Spanish was really important, helping me understand the culture and conversations. From secret conversations at home, saying 20 in Spanish better than my mom, and staying at Fort Hunt instead of going to Stratford for the AAP, immersion has truly impacted me. me. So please, please, don't throw, don't lock this door and throw away this wonderful key. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak to us from that group? Please come up.
Hi, my name is Nora Emery. I am in fourth grade, and I go to Fort Hunt Elementary School. I think it's, I think it is important to have Spanish immersion because it is a huge opportunity for kids to learn other languages. I think it is also important that you can go to different countries and communicate with other people, places like Costa Rica, Peru, Mexico, and many more. But just remember, the world without language is just, well, nothing. Spanish immersion means so much to me if, because I, because I learn stuff that I usually would not be able to learn. Please do not take this opportunity away. Thank you.
Hello, my name is, hola, cómo estás? Mi nombre es Asia. Mi hermano y mi mamá, yo y yo, fuimos a Costa Rica dos años pasado, y yo fui con personas de mi clase in Maryland International Day School. Yo fui a una escuela a Costa Rica. Estuve muy bien. Yo tengo nuevos amigos y aprendi, and aprendi a hablar más español, y yo aprendi a bailar. If you take away Spanish immersion, people will not, people will not know what I just said, or kids. If I was an adult, I would not want this for my child because if I moved to Costa Rica, my kid would not have anyone to talk to because they speak Spanish. Please do not ruin this opportunity for kids like me to not get a chance to speak another
Thank you. Has everyone spoken? Who wants to speak to us? All right. Well, thank you all for attending tonight, particularly you students. You've been very articulate and passionate about what you like, and we really value your opinions, so thank you all for coming out tonight. Thank you to the parents and all other advocates as well for all of your causes. We do appreciate that. The FY 2018 advertised budget will be discussed here at a work session on Thursday evening beginning at 7:00 P.M. I hope you plan to attend that to watch us talk about what you said to us. And finally, I do want to remind you that on April 4th through 6th, the Board of Supervisors will be holding their own public hearing. It's imperative that you all come out to those public hearings as well, because they are our funding bodies, and they need to hear from you students. Remind your parents, April 4th, 5th, and 6th. And if you go to fairfaxcounty.gov, your parents can figure out how you can co-sign up and speak to them as well, because they are the people that give us the money to help us make our decisions. So thank you all so much for coming out tonight.
Madam President, if I may add just one more thing. Before county Board of Supervisors set their tax rate, real property taxes, it will be important for the county residents to express their views and what the proper tax rate should be. I think there's a way to sign up to speak before they set the tax rate, because that will determine total revenue that will come to the county.
That date is February 28th, when the Board of Supervisors authorizes the proposed real estate tax rate. That is February 28th. So again, go to fairfaxcounty.gov and look for their calendar, as well as opportunities to testify before them as well. Thank you so much. This work session is adjourned. You're welcome.